...the public hearing and thing of that nature. We sure appreciate that. Thank you. So at this time, I call the meeting to order. Please stand for the invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance, and the Texas Pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. Father, I bring the needs of our city before you and ask that you bless us with your grace and mercy. I pray for your protection to cover all of our public safety personnel and that their services may be filled with peace. I also pray for every person that calls our wonderful city home. May your kingdom of righteousness be manifested in the hearts of all those here this evening in Jesus' name. Amen.
And the first one is a life-saving presentation for Officer Hunter Rolet and Officer Mayor Travers. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I think Chief Wendell Mitchell's gonna cover this item.
I'm here tonight to recognize two of our officers with our department, Officers Rolet and Travers. A little history on this life-saving award, and I'll tell you, this is the sixth life-saving award I've presented since I've been here this year. As a chief, you know, that's a lot to have to present. You hate the fact that families went through something like this, but I'm excited that our officers were there and they were really intervening in that and saved somebody's life in the process. So on October 9th of this year, Officers Rolet and Travers responded to a call of a female who was overdosing on an unknown substance. They located the victim at her residence and were able to move her to the floor, checked her pulse, and found that she had done. They immediately began performing CPR, and Officer Travers introduced a dose of Narcan. Narcan and naloxone is that medicine that reverses the effects of an opioid to help people who are overdosing. There was no observance of any changes in her condition, so they administered a second dose. Shortly thereafter, administering the second dose, the female began to have irregular breathing, taking shallow breaths. While Officer Rolet identified as possible agonal breathing, Officer Travers administered a third dose of Narcan. While Officer Rolet continued chest compressions shortly after the third dose, officers began to see the female taking more regular breaths and began to have a strong pulse. However, she was still not conscious or responsive. Lake City's Fire responded to the scene and took over life-saving measures from that point forward. I'm very happy to say that both officers' professionalism and quick thinking and dedication to duty reflect the highest standards of law enforcement and made a true impact in somebody's life that evening. So I'd like to bring them both up here to the front. If Officer Rolet and Officer Travers come up here, please. And if I can get Captain's Deputy Chief Jesse Hunter and Jimmy Gregg up here as well.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a presentation to recognize graduates of the Corinth Citizens Academy. Before we get into that, I'd just like to make a few comments. Before we begin the presentation, I'd like to take a moment to address those in the audience tonight who went through the Corinth City Academy. If you went through the Corinth City Academy, will you please stand and be recognized? Local government is arguably the most impactful level of government when it comes to our daily lives. It shapes the communities we live in by providing essential services and creating opportunities for residents and businesses to connect and thrive. This program was intended to give residents an in-depth look at how that all happens in Corinth, and we aim to continue offering it in the years to come. On behalf of myself and the Corinth City Council, we congratulate you for being the first residents to complete the course and are grateful that you could join us tonight to recognize your accomplishments. So at this time, we'll turn it over to Emma.
Sure, I think Emma's gonna handle the rest of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Thank you all for being here tonight. As you know, the Citizens Academy concept was an initiative that we identified in our most recent strategic plan update. I know when we launched the program, we weren't sure what the response and interest level would be, but I'm happy to share, we had eighteen residents and even one council member participate in the course. And although they couldn't all be here tonight, we still celebrate them all. They committed to eight weeks of classes where every Tuesday they got to hear directly from a city department about what they do and how their work ultimately impacts the citizens they serve. From behind-the-scenes tours to hands-on activities, the participants were able to learn more about their local government and are taking that knowledge now with them out into the community. I'd personally like to thank them for their trust, patience, and commitment as we all went through this program together for the first time. They always showed up with great questions and a willingness to learn that I know we as staff were all inspired by. Another thank you to our directors and their teams for taking time to create meaningful classes, often turning it into a competition amongst themselves to have the best session. I promised the group that I wouldn't embarrass them too much tonight, but again, thank you all for going through our first-ever Corinth Citizens Academy. It is our hope that you're coming out of it feeling more informed, more engaged, and more connected to your city. So. And if they wouldn't mind, I'd love for them to come up to the front so we could all take a picture with the city council, if that's okay.
One second. We wanted to tell, we have a presentation. We wanted to tell Emma, thank you very much. This is from her group.
Aw, thank you.
Cindy made the bag.
Thank you.
At our first class, Cindy told us, Emma told us about a buckle.
Oh, my God.
And there's your buckle.
Thank you so much.
You can tell them about it.
Yeah, so this was from when the Boeing factory opened in Corinth, I think in like the late eighties.
Yeah.
And somebody had this listed on Etsy. It was like a commemorative belt buckle from that opening, and I made a joke about it, and I guess...
So that night, a lot of us watched. So we got it. And then this is for you, too.
Thank you so much.
There you go.
Someone was paying attention.
I just want to say that when they offer a second one, please, everybody who's in this room because you have something to say about what's going on in the community, that's the workshop and the class that y'all need to be in. You're gonna hear it straight from the lips. They will take your questions directly, and this is actually worth every minute of your time to be involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number three, recognition of professional achievement. Presentation acknowledgements, Shelley McCain, Lance Barker, and Johnny Williamson for successfully completing of the International Code Council and the Independent Alliance of the Electrical Industry Certification Program. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you want to introduce this item, Melissa? This is some of her staff that got certified, and I'll let her give a quick synopsis, and then we have a quick presentation.
Thank you. I would just like to introduce Amanda Wozniak, who's a public policy specialist with the Independent Alliance of the Electrical Industry, and she's gonna talk a little more about the achievements of these three individuals in the Planning and Development Department.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Amanda Wozniak, and I am honored to join you on behalf of the International Association of Electrical Inspectors and the International Code Council to present a special recognition to the city of Corinth. Tonight, Corinth becomes the seventh city in the nation to receive the Electric City Certification of Recognition, joining an elite group of municipalities that have demonstrated a strong and sustained commitment to electrical safety, professional inspection training, and the highest standards of code enforcement. This designation isn't simply symbolic. It reflects your leadership's decision to invest in the skills and capabilities of your inspection team, to align your permitting and inspection practices with nationally-recognized pathways, and to put the safety of your residents and businesses front and center. In cities that participate in the Electric City program, all these efforts combine to reduce electrical hazards, protect homes and commercial properties from fire risk, and strengthen community resilience. By endorsing this program and giving your staff the support they need, you are not only protecting Corinth today, but you are preparing it for tomorrow's growth, tomorrow's challenges, and tomorrow's technologies. On behalf of the International Code Council and the International Association of Electrical Inspectors, it is my privilege to present the Certificate of Recognition to the city of Corinth. Congratulations to everybody involved.
That's it.
Good, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
But we are very, very excited that we could do this as a team, and this next time, we have one coming up, Amanda, in February, is that correct?
Yes, and it'll be on basics of commercial.
Very good. Okay, citizens' comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Comments about any of the council agenda items are appreciated by the council and may be taken into consideration at this time or during that agenda item. Council is prohibited from acting on or discussing items brought before them at this time. So we have several people that would like to speak. First one is Paul, is it Morley? Please state your name and your address for the records, please, and you got three minutes.
My name is Paul Morley. Did you say address? I'm sorry. Yeah, 3030 Blake Street here in Corinth. Good evening, council members. My name is Paul Morley, and I'm here in support of my neighbors Jeff and Tammy Oliver in their desire to repeal the portion of the exotic animal ban that was recently changed. I've known Jeff and Tammy for over thirteen, my wife and I have known Jeff and Tammy for approximately thirteen years, and in that time, they've owned two small exotic pets, a miniature kangaroo and a miniature deer. They've cared for them responsibly and without incident. There's been a safety, there has never been a safety issue, complaint, or sign of neglect that I am aware of. These animals have been part of a quiet, well-managed home. I've trusted this family enough to let my three daughters spend time in their home for years, and I've seen firsthand how careful and attentive they are as pet owners and as neighbors. If the council is unwilling or unable to repeal the ban, I respectfully recommend granting Jeff and Tammy a reasonable extension, at least six months to a year, so that they can make proper arrangements for their animals or to secure a new home, especially given today's challenging housing market. I'm asking you to weigh their proven record of responsibility and neighborliness in your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Arlene Crocker? Please state your name and your address for the records, please.
My name is Arlene Crocker. I live at 3112 Blake Street here in Corinth, and I would like to just speak to you for a few moments about my neighbors Tammy and Jeff Oliver. They live on Blake Street also. It's my understanding that they have a couple of exotic pets. I've lived on that street for twenty-five years, and I have never had any issues with this family or with their animals getting out of their home. They keep them in their backyard or inside their home. There's never been an issue. I understand that there's been a change to the ordinance. I am asking for your forbearance, if you will, in assessing them fines. They have lived there for a number of years. Jeff is a police officer for the city of Corinth, I mean for Crum, and his wife is a nurse at a children's hospital, for heaven's sake. I think that we need to give them a little consideration to do something with their pets, or I understand they're in the process of looking for another home, but times are tough right now, and it's the holidays. So I'm asking you to please consider offering them some leniency in this ordinance that we have, because their pets have never gotten out, and then they don't bother anybody. And I'm not scared, and you wouldn't be either. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Patrick Munro? Please state your name and your address for the records, please.
My name's Patrick Mooney. I live at 3111 Blake Street. So I thank you guys for your time and attention. I also am a neighbor of Jeff and Tammy. I've lived on Blake Street for eleven years. We've witnessed this town grow, the struggles to compete with the surrounding municipalities for resources as we continue to grow. I believe we have one great resource in this town, and that is our residents. I'm here tonight to support a family of three of those people, Jeff, Tammy, and Logan. They're a household of civil servants. Jeff, being a police officer, Tammy working at Children's Plano. We feel like that the Crum police car that Jeff takes home a few days a week is a huge part of our neighborhood. It is the first thing that people see. It provides a huge level of safety. It's also become a meeting point for many of us, where they built a community in the front yard for a lot of us to bring our animals, our dogs when we're walking. It's become a central point for our block. We're just asking that they take, you guys take into consideration the total picture of this ordinance and possibly make amends to granting leniency or grandfathering in. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Vincent Ryan? Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Apologize for the poor handwriting. Vincent Runyon, 2506 Vistaview Drive, also a neighbor of Jeff and Tammy's. I do encourage the council to repeal or at minimum amend the exotic animal ban that's in Title IX, Chapter 91.11. I advise a differentiation between dangerous wild animals and exotic animals. My family, as well as many others in town, own what one would consider a whole flock of wild animals. In our case, we have exotic birds, but exotic is budgies and cockatiel and a little parrot, which of course my entire family adore. Others that I know own lizards, turtles, all of which present no danger to their owners nor this community. Again, our neighbors Jeff and Tammy, who other neighbors have applauded their amazing citizenship, they're more than qualified to take care of exotic animals in a safe manner. My own four children play at their house very frequently, and I've felt at no point any kind of danger or ever been scared or felt threatened by their animals. Lastly, an exotics animal ban such as this, without that kind of differentiation, would cause some of our best citizens, such as Jeff and Tammy, to leave our community. I'd just like to note that Officer Jeff Oliver has in fact saved the life of one of our neighbors fairly recently. An incredible story that I invite you to look up. It's actually amazing, and this is the kind of person that we want to keep in our city. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is it Tina Elton? Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Tina Elton, and I live at 3025 Blake Street. I actually live right next door to Jeff and Tammy. I've lived there for almost twenty years now. They moved in, they're wonderful people, as you've heard all of us attest to. They're wonderful neighbors. They support our community. They support the community of Corinth. They're here for any of us. Yes, they do have some exotic animals. I have five grandchildren, who are now, my oldest is almost sixteen. They have been there and played with those animals in this home. They've been educated by this family on how to approach an animal, how to care for an animal, how to, you know, look out for yourself and make sure they're cared for, too. These individuals, they have their own son, who they would never put in danger, let alone any of ours. I have babysat their exotic animals. They're very timid, they're very well cared for, they're very well a part of our life as well, because we've been there since they brought them into their home. I, I'm sorry, I'm really nervous. I feel very sad for them, that we're trying to push out people from our community that are really good people. As Mr. Runyon had said, yes, he helped save a woman's life recently. Not only does he go out every day of his job to save all of us and protect us, as well as his wife, take care of any children that come into the hospital in her care, but we're putting on them that they don't value our lives, which they prove every day that they do. Their animals would never be a danger. They would never have anything that they don't have information on, on how to care for, on how to properly protect, not just us, but themselves, their child. And I really hope that we don't force them to move out. They have been the most wonderful neighbors ever since they've moved in, and I don't know what we would do without them there. I would really hate for us to push away someone in our community over something that could be maybe given some grace and relooked at how to restructure it or reword it for it to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean Hill? Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Sean Hill. I'm currently at 400 Rembert Court in Highland Village. I met Jeff and Tammy. I lived right off of Hudson Road, just next street over. I found out they had exotic animals. I've got three kids. They were so excited to go over and just meet them. One of my daughters is Charlie, one of their animals is Charlie, so we've kind of, that's their kindred spirits. I've talked about them today. I bring up Jeff, the fact that, yes, he is a police officer. He is very well knowledgeable about all the animals that he brings in. That's about all I got.
Thank you. Jeffrey Hilton? Hilton? Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
My name's Jeff Hilton. I live at 3025 Blake Street, next-door neighbors. We share a fence with these exotic animals, and they're awesome. I mean, we've got little gaps in our fence. I'm out to water the flowers that split between us and everything, and they come up there and, you know, once some of the water, I've been in their backyard around these two animals. They're loving animals. They're no different than the dog cat that probably most of you have. It's just unfortunate that we're in this situation today, and I do respect the council's decisions on what they decided to think that is best for the community, but in this case, I think it needs to be rethought of. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Logan Oliver, please.
So I actually had somebody coming instead who couldn't be here. She gave a reported message, it's okay. So her name is Cassidy Jagger. She is the president of ECM Group, which is the Education Conservation of Macrocode Initiative. which is the Education Conservation of Macro pod A Society.
State your name and, and your address and who it is, and, and you have three minutes.
My name is Jeff Oliver. I live at 3101 Blake Street. I have kangaroo.
Good evening. My name is Cassidy Jagger, and I am the Global Director of ECSM, the Education and Conservation Society of Macro Pod A. I have 15 years of experience working with macropods, traveling to Australia to work with conservation agencies during bushfires and organizations like Vets for Compassion. In three minutes, one cannot possibly provide all of the pertinent answers to the questions a responsible council would have regarding the ownership of kangaroos. Surely the council wants their decisions to be based on reality and facts, not emotion or ill-advised opinion. I am available to anyone in the council that is interested in further discussing the matter at hand and all that it entails with factual, documented information and its resources. I've known Jeff Oliver for over a decade. Jeff is well-educated in husbandry and the management of kangaroos, and more than meets the standards set by government agencies. Quite often, the outcome of his research has been sought by other owners of macropods. There is no crisis to be solved here. Kangaroos are prey animals, not predatory. Jeff's pet kangaroo Charlie is castrated when he was a joey, and therefore his size is limited, and he has a gentle demeanor. He's not a threat to the public. You're far more at risk from being bit by a canine than any injury from a kangaroo. If you're to Google male kangaroo image, or watch Nat Geo, you will see a very different animal than Charlie. This is the image that people think of, and quite often it leads to misinformation. As politicians, you are aware of the different entities that are out there, that are seeking to have decisions made the way they desire the outcome to be, regardless of misinformation. Surely this council wants decisions to be based on fact and the best interest of their constituents. It's never too late to change a decision that one feels was the wrong decision. There are always options to make it correct. I thank you for your time. I am available for any questions that the council may wish to have answered currently at this time. I'm on standby, but I, again, I am more than happy to meet with any one of the council at any time to answer any questions that they have, and I do appreciate your time.
Tammy? Please state your name and your address for the records, please.
I'm Tammy Oliver. I live at 3101 Blake Street. I came to speak about our animals. We've had, we've had Charlie for four years, since he was a baby, and we've had Little Bit for 13. My son has never known life without this little, this little deer. Sorry. As a toddler, Logan didn't know what an exotic animal was. He just knew that these were his pets. These were, he always called them his furry siblings. He didn't, he didn't know until he got into school that, that it was anything different, that it was something that was not normal for everybody else. He just thought that these were his pets. That was all it was. It, it was no different than having a dog. You've heard that I'm a nurse, and my husband's a police officer. We serve the public. We're not, we don't take these responsibilities lightly. We've done this a long time. Jeff has been an officer for 15 years, and I've been a nurse for 25. We're not here to put anybody in danger. We love our neighbors, and our neighbors love us. Half this, half this site over here is just for us, and this isn't even everybody that wanted to come. So, people ask why we have exotic animals, and I get it. I didn't, I didn't grow up that way. I didn't think that I'd ever have exotic animals. But my husband loves them, and I love him, and they came as a package deal, and that was okay with me. He's got people that are willing to help us out. Cassidy that spoke, she couldn't get here because she lives far away, but she, she made time to do this for us, and that's important. So, you've heard Jeff has done extensive research. He's, he's done this for decades. He's had animals from the time that he was a kid. It's always been his thing. He loves it. I can't imagine life without these animals. I never knew that a kangaroo could chuff. If you go and say hello, that's what, you walk up to him, he'll chuff. And this little deer, he's 15 inches tall, and he makes the cutest, sweetest sounds. There's nothing, I can't imagine not having them in my backyard. I, we talked to Logan about this after this came across, after the police department called us and let us know, and we asked Logan what his, what he wanted to do, because he's gonna, if we choose to leave this city, he has to leave his school. He has to leave his friends. This is all he's ever known, and he agreed to move out of this city so that he could keep his animals. And that just breaks my heart. This kid is 11. He shouldn't have to make decisions like that. So, we just ask that you appeal, that you let us, let us keep these animals. They're part of our family. They're part of what we, what we do every day. We're not trying to do something, you know, that we shouldn't. We're careful, and we're protecting these animals, and we love them dearly. They don't know anything other than us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please state your name and your address for the records, please.
My name's Jeff Oliver. I live at 3101, excuse me, 3101 Blake Street. I'm the guy with kangaroo and the deer. Okay. I didn't come for the prepared speech. I came to answer questions, or able to provide questions, because, okay. So, let's have an informed decision made, right? I mean, instead of coming up here threatening lawsuits and civil penalties and, and, and potential other things, let's have a civil discourse, okay? Let's be adults. What should I do? Okay, so, my, my, my deer. It's a flight animal. Rather than hurting anybody, it's gonna run away. The kangaroo. They run away. They're a flight animal. A pet bunny rabbit is more dangerous than my kangaroo. The pet bunny rabbit can bite. It will bite. Kangaroo will not. It'll run away. So, there is zero risk to the public. I have a, a tall fence to keep it in. I have a double door enclosure, so I have, we share a fence. We put in two fences, our gate, so if one's open, the next one will catch them. So, we have the appropriate means of keeping them contained. This is, you know, I have springs on my door to my gate to lock automatically. There are other things in place to keep from any escapes happening. Again, I wrote you a letter. You've heard my arguments. You've heard my statements. So I have nothing more to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sean, is it Sailor? Schlager? Please state your name and your address for the records, please.
Sean Sawyer, 3110 Blake Street. I've lived down the street from Tammy and Logan and Jeff for eight years, and, you know, Jeff's someone who serves as a police officer and protected all of us for a long time. I want to talk about his kangaroo and his deer. They aren't a problem. They are family pets. He has raised, loved, and cared for long before this ordinance, ordinance ever existed. For years, these animals have lived quietly and peacefully in our neighborhood. If you spoke to anyone on our street, you'd hear the same thing. They're harmless. They're well cared for, and they bring a little joy to everyone who sees them. Now, because of a new ordinance, my neighbor, a man who has given his career to enforcing the law and serving others, is being told he has 90 days to uproot these animals or face fines. These are animals that trust him, animals that have only known one home, animals that aren't causing any danger to anyone. I know Corinth needs regulations. I respect that, but there's a difference between regulating what happens in the future and punishing someone for something they've been responsibly doing for years. That isn't fairness. That isn't who we are as a community. All I'm asking, all we are asking, is for compassion, for a simple grandfather exemption that lets this family keep the animals they've always had under reasonable conditions set by the city. This doesn't weaken the ordinance. It simply acknowledges reality, fairness, and humanity. This neighbor has protected our city for decades. He's a good man, a good officer, and a great neighbor. He's not trying to bend the rules. He's just asking not to have his life and the lives of these animals torn apart because of a change in the law that came along after they were part of his home. I'm asking you to do what's right, not just what's written. Please allow these two animals to stay in our neighborhood. Let this family stay whole. Let their animals stay in the only home they've ever known. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, I don't have any more. Okay. All right. At this time, my consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted in one motion. Should the mayor or council member desire discussion of any item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. We're gonna pull item number six tonight from the consent agenda, and we'll, because we're have to do some administrative details before we can vote on that. So other than that, I'd entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve items four, five, seven, eight, and nine as presented.
Second?
Okay, is there any further discussion? Cast your vote. Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, next item is public hearing. Conduct a public hearing to consider testimony and act on the rezoning request by the applicant 2200 Corinth Holdings LLC to amend the zoning ordinance and zoning map of the city of Corinth, each being a part of the Unified Development Code from SF2 Single Family Residential to a planned development with a Bay zoning district of MXC Mixed Use Commercial on approximately 9.2 acres, generally located at 2200 FM 2181. Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Melissa Daly, our Planning and Development Director will handle this item and answer any questions.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This site is just a little over nine acres. It's currently zoned SF2, single family. It is in the Future Land Use Comprehensive Plan as a mixed-use node. The proposed development is a mixed-use development with 29 townhomes, 48 apartments, over about 35,000 square feet of commercial space, which is about 8.37 units per acre. This is the location of the site on FM 2181, just west of Post Oak Road. It's actually two parcels, nine acres total. Part of the land has a flood plain going through it. Of course, that land will not be developed and will be left in its natural state. This map shows the surrounding land uses. There are a variety of single-family neighborhoods, Corps of Engineers property, as well as C1-zoned commercial property across the street. Just to the west is the Canyon Lake Ranch Development, which would, that PD is, requires commercial use on the front, which is this kind of brown color that which would all, all be commercial use. The Comprehensive Plan designates this site specifically, and you can actually see the exact outline of the site in the Comprehensive Plan map, as a mixed-use node. Mixed-use node allows for a lower-scale mixed-use development with a range of walkable retail, restaurants, employment, and connected residential uses, proposes three-to-four-story building scale, allowing mixed use by rights of both residential and commercial uses, and allowing for missing middle housing such as townhomes, live-work, zero-lot, single-family, et cetera, and transition to the existing neighborhoods. So, there've been a number of iterations on this plan to help improve the plan, as well as respond to concerns in the immediately surrounding neighborhood. This is, we're, we're calling these Concept Plan A, B, and C. So this was the initial submittal. Again, 35,000 square feet of commercial space, 48 apartments above, two retail buildings, that's 48 total in the two buildings, and then 29 townhomes on the south and west. So we worked with the developer to explore ways to add green space, asked that they look at opportunities to expand green space wherever possible, and you can see here that quite a number of green space opportunities were added to the plan. Added a potential tree preservation area in the center. I'll talk a little bit about more, a little more about these in a minute. And added parallel parking in front of the townhomes with street trees. There was a dumpster location in this area. It has now been moved further to the north, northwest. One of the drive-throughs was removed. There was initially a, a second drive-through in this, on this building. Instead, there's a patio with green space for, like, outdoor dining, for example. Added the option of screening evergreens on the south end. I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that landscape in just a second. Added ornamental trees along FM 21, so all of the purple that you see here, those are all ornamental trees. Would have loved to seen street trees along 2181 on the curb edge, but Tech dot doesn't allow that, so we asked for three-to-four-foot plantings along the curb edge to help make that feel a little more pedestrian-friendly. And then the requirement of low-level bollard-style parking light, lighting, so you won't have the, the tall poles, just the low-level lighting. In response to some of the concerns by adjacent residents, the developer came up with a Plan B, which was the option of two-story office warehouse units, and I think the idea with that is that you would not have windows on the southern-facing side. But to accommodate that, it did require a little more parking, because of course townhomes incorporate parking within those buildings, so we, the, this would be closer to the property line with a five-foot setback for fire access, and therefore we would not be able to put street trees or any kind of trees behind that, so that there could be fire access. And then it eliminated the central green space that we had showed in the previous version here, because of the need for the parking, as well as eliminate the parallel parking. So after a lot of feedback and, you know, working with the developer on addressing those concerns, Concept C was developed, essentially moving this row of townhomes up, parallel to the other townhomes. So these would face in opposite directions. These townhomes would face the Corps of Engineer property, which of course will never be developed, and then these homes would face to the east. The garages would be in the rear, off of an alley here. And then there would be a, a larger buffer than we had before, a 12-foot landscape buffer along the southern edge. So this kind of shows that plan on the aerial, so you can just see the context of that, and you could see the commercial, or commercially-zoned properties across the street. So the tree preservation proposed for the site would be a total of 22.5%. That's incorporating the six-inch caliper trees and above that would be preserved. In addition to that, and not included in that 22.5%, there are proposed to be tree, three trees within the parking lot to be preserved. I've got an image of that. I'll show you in just a second, as well as potentially trees to be preserved along the southern boundary. So those would add to that 22%. These are the three trees that would, that could be preserved within the parking lot. It's actually a pretty large space, about 7,500 square feet. So that's the size of, say, a larger, single-family lot, for example, to give you a little perspective on that. And those three trees, three trees are 39, 34, and 23 caliber inch. And then there, we've looked quite a bit, quite extensively at the fencing along the southern edge, and you have an existing mostly eight-foot wood fence. There's a six-foot wood fence on a part of it that is on or near a retaining wall. There are a number of existing trees that are very close to the property line, so this, I think, requires an interesting approach that is specific to the site, literally site, site by site and property by property to look at what might be appropriate. Here's some imaging of some of the trees. Some of these trees are on the adjacent residence property. Some of the trees are on Mr. Bosco's property, so... So I think there's a question of how do we, how do we provide screening with the existing trees? So the screening options would be that there are shade trees added to the existing shade trees that could be preserved within the 12-foot green buffer, or a row of evergreen conical trees. And this is a bit long, but I'll paraphrase. So the option one essentially would be filling in with shade trees, with consideration for the shade trees that are within 10 feet of the fence line on either side of the fence, so as not to have the trees be too crowded upon one another with 30-foot spacing. Option two would entail the potential of adding shade trees, but also potentially adding conical trees if that is something that the adjacent residents might prefer. So we would ask that the applicant, or the property owner, confer with the adjacent property owners, literally property by property, to look at the trees that are on the side and what might be preferred lot by lot, and that a Plan B submitted to the, to the staff for review to ensure that it meets the intent of the, of that standard. So it essentially could result in a combination of shade trees and the conical trees. The trees to be planted, there are quite a few trees to be planted. 107 shade trees are shown on the, on the site plan, not including any trees to be planted along the southern property line, plus 114 ornamental trees. The green space, add it all up, that is proposed, is 2.94 acres of green space, or 32% green space, not including the flood zone. It's 1.75 acres outside of the floodplain, or 19%. Just a comparison of what they're proposing here, you can see here, it is substantial, particularly on the gross open spaces, more than any other development that we've seen in recent years, and then 22.5% tree preservation. There was some, there were comments about the concern about access to the future trail system that doesn't really exist, at least not in full today. So the applicant has agreed to provide an easement through the floodplain area that would allow for a trail to be put in at some point. These are representative images of the type of development. These are images of Lakeside Village. That's what the applicant is sort of pulling from. Of course, that's a much larger development, but it gives you an idea of the type of scale and architecture that he is proposing. And then you see images of three-story townhomes, which are similar in scale to what is being proposed. The standards would be, have a base zoning of MXC, which has, and these are just a few of the standards, as an example, the flat roof, variation in articulation in facade design, fenestration, meaning windows and doors, openings would be required, clear delineation between the first and second level. So we have some pretty strict architectural standards in the MXC code, so that would apply here. Some of the exceptions, the site plan to be consistent with the site plan exhibit and design standards, so that would become part of the design standards within the ordinance that would need to be complied with. We added an additional use of a childcare, licensed childcare center, because that could be one of the uses that the applicant is looking at for one of the, one of the two one-story buildings that are on either end on FM 2181. And then added some prohibited uses, ambulance service, institution for the care of alcoholic psychiatric or narcotic patients, laundry, commercial laundry self-service, and vape, and vape paraphernalia. The commercial laundry and self-service is not the same as, like, a dry cleaner. That's actually a different category. And then the building height limit would be three stories, and Ballard parking lot lighting, as I talked about earlier, would be required. And of course, this development, as all developments are required to comply with ISWIM, which essentially does not allow drainage that would exceed the current conditions, and in pretty much all cases, it improves current conditions because there isn't, there aren't drainage facilities on the site currently. This is approximately a $40 million development, so you can see here the $214,000 in annual property tax revenue, about 35,000 square feet of commercial space, conservative estimate is about $173,000 in sales tax revenue. So the proposed use meets the comprehensive plan for a mixed-use node, which calls for three-to-four-story buildings. This has one and three-story buildings, allowing mixed use by right with residential and commercial use, which this plan does, allowing for missing middle housing types such as townhomes, and then transition to surrounding neighborhoods. There's no use as an option C along the single-family neighborhood to the south, so that, that was the result of moving those townhomes and a 12-foot landscape buffer. This is, as of early this afternoon, we've gotten a few other letters of opposition, but those are all in your packet, I believe, or have been handed out this evening. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial at the regular meeting on November 10th, 2025. The application is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval with the following conditions: incorporating Plan C in the design standards, and the incorporation of Option Two for the tree planting on the southern boundary. And I'd be happy to answer your question, any questions, and the applicant is here as well.
Were there any questions from council?
I do have a comment. I, in some of the emails that I got, people were requesting a masonry fence on the back. Can you explain what that would do to existing?
Yeah, and we've seen a couple of comments asking for a masonry wall, particularly an eight-foot masonry wall would have a very large footer, and the construction of that footer would likely kill any trees that had a canopy over that footer, because it is major construction work that goes quite deep, so the wall doesn't fall over. So it would have a significant impact, not only on the trees on the Bosco side, but also residents' trees.
Yeah, that was my understanding. I don't think that's the outcome anybody wants, really.
Any other questions, council?
Mayor, I just offer a reminder, if the council did move forward tonight, it will require a supermajority because the P&amp;Z denied it. I just wanted to point that out.
Is there no, no other questions? Does the developer want to make his presentation?
Paul Bosco, 4509 Mahogany Lane. Sorry. No, you can hear me. Paul Bosco, 4509 Mahogany Lane, Copper Canyon, Texas. I believe Melissa's really touched, I really didn't have a lot of extra to throw in here besides, I think we really, we did a good job, I think, with the neighbors and listening to some of the feedback, and we worked through different options, and, you know, I'm in full support of that Option C. I think that's the most effective way, after working through this, and we landed on that Option B, and we were making an effort to find something to do, because mid-block retail, not being on frontage, would, it gets a little tricky if we were to try to put something behind there besides something like a townhome, or it's a little bit softer. And, yeah, so that was just an effort. I think we collectively worked through it, and, yeah, I'm open to questions, but I don't have a lot extra.
Does anybody from council have questions? Okay. Thank you. At this time, I'll open it up for a public hearing, and first one that would like to speak is Jay Eric, is it Ro, Rourke? Please state your name and your address for the record, please, and you've got three minutes.
Yeah, John Eric Rourke, 1804 St. James Court, Corinth, Texas, 76210. Okay, so what I have here, so I understand the city needs tax revenue. I get that. Today, coincidentally, with a nice rain, I went down, got some pictures, I'm going to show you guys in just a minute. What this is right here, what's not being addressed in the presentation, as it should be, is the volume of water that's going to come off the parking space that's created on this nine-acre development. This is a, an anchor that the Corps of Engineers put in in 1965 along the property line in the creek that runs to the western side of that development. It's an absolute washout, and I'll show you guys pictures in just a minute, so much so that this, this ankle was set after a number of years of rain, washed out. This is under about six inches of mud and debris in the creek bed. I reached out to Chandler Sanford, because I've been working with him, Blue Spur Lakes Corps of Engineers. So when this is over, I'll give this back to him. He'll reset that in, in the spot where it should be, but there is a massive amount of water that's coming out right now. Like I said.
Thank you. Nicholas, Gerald, Gerald, sorry I butchered your name.
My whole life, it's okay. Nicholas Giorgio, like the designer, no relation. 2217 High Point Drive, Corinth. I'm on that southern fence line. My house is the fifth property from the, from the right, if you're looking at the map. Understand the need for economic development, so I'm not opposed to developing that, that space back there. Just for the record of the three options that were presented, for those of us along that fence line, I believe, I can't speak for everybody, but for me, Option C is definitely the most desirable of those. Some of the concerns I have, I appreciate the comments about the masonry wall. That's a big question for us, is we have wood fences, and we've got to maintain those. You know, are, can have an easement to go back there and maintain that property, a masonry fence that would be owned by the developer. Obviously, they could own that and maintain it, but then we run into the issue with all of our trees that are, that are back there. So I don't know what the solution for that is, but it is definitely a concern of the homeowners along that fence line, and I just want to be clear about that. Other concerns we have are just assurances that the developer really is going to develop that property and just not flip it. Just in my experience, sometimes that happens, and then all of a sudden, we're, now I've got the zoning approval, and we end up having to do big fights again through, through new plans, and I just, I hope that the intention of the Boscos is to develop that property if, if approved, so that we're not set with something different in the future. I just hope that the council is very thoughtful about sightlines. We've all got families, we built pools back there. You know, now having a three, possibly four-story type of development, there's concern, we've got four children, we'd like them to be able to play and swim in the backyard without having to think or wonder if people are, you know, reviewing their activities back there from that property. And then just the last concern is my house would be kind of directly where that drive-thru, potentially coffee shop, I think is what's being proposed, but who knows what actually goes there, and I just don't know what type of noise will be heard from homes that are, that are close to that. It's, I don't know how many feet it would be away, but I would assume that homeowners along there will be listening to constant, you know, screaming through the drive-thru from the individual inside to the cars that are coming through there, and I would just like the council to kind of consider those things. Again, understand that development needs to happen. We do support that for those of us that live along there, just hopefully we can come to something that works for everybody. Thank you.
Amy? Is it Connie? Please, please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Amy Conine, and my address is 1705 Goss Hawk Lane. I emailed everyone Monday, and I really appreciate Lindsay and Scott for responding to my email regarding my concerns. I attended the planning and zoning meeting last week, and there were a number of people here that brought up similar concerns, and mine are more about the multifamily portion of it, and a little bit about the, the commercial side of it. We do have several new, large apartment complexes further down Swisher that do, are not, they're brand-new, they're not fully occupied, and I think it's a concern to have vacancy and vacant properties this far in, surrounded by housing developments, and these are not, the housing developments behind it are, you know, third of an acre, half of an acre. These are nice, substantial homes. The townhomes do support more permanent Corinth residents. The apartments are a concern because of apartments just do not support longevity as citizens of our community, and that impacts our schools, that impacts our school ratings when students aren't there or move in and move out, and I have a real concern about that. As far as, I've, I've seen both emails reference a coffee shop with a drive-thru. We have scooters on 2499 with a drive-thru, and we also have an HTO coming that will also have coffee. We had a Starbucks further down that closed, and so I have a real concern about our area being able to support restaurants and coffee shops in that location. With, we had Lake City's Cafe that closed, it just seems like there's a, it's very challenging to keep for our community to support those local restaurants. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie Peak? Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
I'm Jackie Peak, 3354 Forest Glen Drive, Corinth Forest subdivision. My husband and I, Ron, my husband, are very much opposed to this rezoning. I agree with all the concerns that have been shared and the ones that will be shared later. One of our concerns that hasn't been addressed much is about the building of so many residents on such a small piece of land, specifically the 30, 29 or 30 townhomes that are planned. The design of placing two long rows of townhomes so close together does not seem like a smart idea. What family would like to look outside their window into the windows of another townhome just a few feet away, or onto a parking lot? And where do you propose for the children to play? There is no consideration for a playground, basketball goal, or dog park. If the children ride their bicycles, skateboards, or scooters, the only area for them to play is a busy parking lot or a very busy street. This is a recipe for a tragic accident, and maybe more than one. Having businesses or restaurants with parking is one thing, but having 78 families, the 48 apartments, and 30 townhomes, also living on this very small plot of land packed with businesses, restaurants, and parking, is not a good idea for the city of Corinth. Hopefully, you care more about the citizens of Corinth than the tax dollars that the city might gain if you're able to sell those townhomes. Regarding the sale of these townhomes, there are plenty of other townhomes on Teasley, closer to I-35, that are sitting empty. Why are we proposing to build more, just so they can sit empty? One thought might be to build the four buildings they're planning, complete with the apartments above them, and designing the back of the property as a playground, a dog park, and a natural area for the families of the residents to enjoy. Building something like that works for all involved. Your position on the city council is to support all Your position on the city council is to support all of the residents of Corinth, not just preferential treatment to developers. It is also not just about the bottom line. I pray you will consider the density of which they are planning to pack this small property, small plot of land, as well as the families that might live there. Please make the right decision for the families and the children of these families. This proposal is not a good idea for the city of Corinth or the future families that might live there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Michael Loflin? Okay, please state your name and your address to the records.
My name is Michael Loflin. I'm resident at thirty-three sixty Forest Glen. And I'm in the Corinth Forest Estates. I'm within two hundred feet of the planned development and I'm the HOA president for our neighborhood. I come in opposition to the plan as it's laid out right now. I do understand, as others have said, that there is going to need to be retail development there. And that's, we want to see that. It's going to be beneficial if it's done well. Right now, my big concern is, the largest concern I have is the safety in that area. It's really in the middle of a blind curve. There's no real crossovers. There's surely not any protected turns going from west, east to west. And then, of course, the west to east, coming right past our own main entrance where U-turns will be happening constantly, especially with the residences, seventy-something residences, right into our main entrance. That's our gated entrance where there's not an egress. So we're having to turn off into that area without any protection, as it is already. And when you have more coming, it's going to be worse. So it goes to the right, as you saw on the map, and hangs hard right. And so it's really a blind area until you get all the way around it. And so I know tax law's going to look at it. I had heard some people say the other night, and even after the meetings, that, hey, we'll deal with the safety concerns later. I think we need to deal with them a little more quickly than that. I think we need to look at it now and consider the fact that there's not a plan right now that can support that level of footprint, which is my second point. It's very dense. I know that one of the members said that it's about a thirty percent open space. That would be, much of that would be, seemingly, seems to me, much of that would be on that one side where the floodplain already is, which, by the way, goes further than his maps show. And I'll bring, I'll give you those copies before I leave. That shows where the floodplain really, it goes into his second parcel and covers most of that, the most recent parcel that he bought up. I let the Corps know about this. I was on the Park Sport in Little Elm, worked with the Corps a lot on a lot of projects. So they're looking at it as well. The density is pretty big, I think, for that area. And so as soon as you try to have exit and egress and going in and out of there and put families in there, like Jackie said, those kids, where are they going to play? Where are they going to go? There's not going to be much space. I know they accommodate at High Point by moving those over and stacking them like sardines. I just don't think it's going to be conducive to folks that are going to buy it up, especially with an overstock at the moment of townhomes in this Corinth area already. And so I think that that's going to be a concern. I think the mixed use could work if it was done with a more reasonable footprint and not quite as many residences packed in there and more accommodation for the traffic that's really going to occur based on the current plan and more accommodation for the families that are going to live there. I don't see any, too many folks buying roughly six-hundred K three-story townhomes on the backside of that packed, mostly commercial, planning. The three stories and the privacy issue remains. I know they took off the stuff right up against the fence, but you've still got three stories within a reasonable number of yards to all those High Point addresses already that are going to still remain there as it stands. And like he said, with regard to the drive-through, that's not going to be very friendly to the neighbors either. I don't see that happening. I have a big heart for wildlife. I'm a conservationist. I'm not an eco nut, sorry for the term. I'm a conservationist, I'm an Eagle Scout, and I conserve. So I sent everybody the pictures today of what wildlife we see.
Thank you, sir. Ashley Leebold? Please state your name and your address to the records, please.
I'm Ashley Leebold. My address is nineteen oh two Bridgestone Drive. Every attempt at the change in zoning has, what now? Okay. Every change that the zoning, for zoning change, has been denied by P&amp;Z already because the plans repeatedly conflict with our character and privacy of the surrounding neighborhoods. I strongly encourage you to visit the site during rush hour. Park, simply observe what the community has been trying to show you. The traffic speaks for itself. The people who live on all four sides of this property, all four neighborhoods, have consistently voiced legitimate concerns. At meetings, the only support for this plan seems to come from the developer. The residents have shared not only their data points but genuine concern for safety, privacy, and long-term livability in our neighborhoods. If something other than single-family homes must go here, then small businesses that don't disrupt the surrounding community would be far more reasonable. Like a dentist or a restaurant, that makes sense. But dense residential does not. Placing townhomes along a busy corridor with no parks, no play areas, and only a parking lot as a usable space is not in the best interest of the families who would live there, nor of the families already living around it. The Army Corps land floods multiple times out of the air. And then paving over more surface area will only worsen that. No matter how a study is framed, we all know that the homeowners in Corinth who were promised improved drainage from the current developments, those promises have not been kept and those neighbors are still dealing with bad drainage runoff. So I'm asking you to tell the developer plainly that that is not what we want for this piece of property. This plan belongs closer to I-35 and not pushed into the middle of established neighborhoods. So I am in opposition to this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Trevor Downey? Please state your name and your address to the records, please.
Trevor Downey, two-two-zero-seven High Point Drive. One of my properties on the property line, it was actually shown in one of the exhibits on the retaining wall. I've spoken opposition against this plan multiple times now. I emailed the city council last week and I appreciate those that got back to me. The overarching kind of theme that I've found throughout this whole process is responsible development. We understand the needs of economic development in the city. I understand that single-family two isn't going to happen on this property or else it would have already. I echo a lot of the thoughts that people have spoke about, you know, understanding, yeah, commercial retail there on the front would be great. I'm worried about the residential aspect of it being too much of a footprint in a condensed space. I also need to consider some other developments along the corridor. We have the Canyon Lakes establishment going in. That's a huge mixed-use development that you all approved this time last year, which makes sense for the corridor, makes sense for that community. It just doesn't really impede on anybody, directly behind anybody. There's another townhome community, I believe, that you guys approved, the Quarry multifamily community, which is condominiums and townhomes on Parker Ridge right across from Lake Dallas. So I'm worried about, you know, overall, is there enough demand for this mixed-use developments, you know, within a half-mile to a mile with each other? You know, personally, I'm worried about property value, how this could potentially negatively affect our property values. Living right behind a mixed-use community probably isn't the most attractive thing. I do want to acknowledge and show appreciation to the developers for speaking with the residents that this directly affects and trying to come up with some sort of possible best solution based on this mixed-use node. And I think they've done that, you know, as well as they can with the limitations that they have and things that they can control. If you all feel that this should be a mixed-use, which, again, I don't think is the most responsible use for it, I strongly urge you all to go with the option C. My personal preference would be the evergreen conifer trees. I will, though, you know, like to make the caveat that the minimum height when they're planted be eight feet. And hopefully, those can be some of the first things that get planted when it gets developed. So that helps, you know, buffer out any noise or light pollution during the construction phase. So, again, this is, you know, if this was a clear-cut case, this wouldn't be the second time that we're going over this. You know, it's an interesting ride with the Planning and Zoning Commission denying it this year compared to last year. But, you know, again, just take into consideration all of our concerns and well-being and understanding that I think we could all support some sort of commercial or retail footprint there, especially towards the front end of the twenty-one eighty-one. Thank you.
Thank you. David, is it Harper? Please state your name and your address for the records, please.
Yes, David Harper, twenty-three oh one High Point Drive. Thank you, Sam and Lindsay, for responding to my email earlier. Appreciate that. I'm not going to go on and on about, you know, my stuff, but it's already been talked about. All I do is underscore Mr. Downey's comments, my good neighbor Nick's comments. I would like to ask you if a comprehensive viability study's been done by like a third-party disinterested professional group to even go down this path. It looks good on paper, sounds good, particularly option three. And thank you to the developer for all the work he's done with us. But it seems like in this economic times we live in, it would be good to know if this is even going to work. When I put staff through all this, your report came back and said, there's no way, or it's got a fifty percent chance of making it. So I believe that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Emma Dooley? Please state your name and your address, please, for the records.
My name is Susan Dooley and I live at thirty-three seventy-five Forest Glen Drive, which is Corinth Forest. Kind of echoing what everyone else has said. But mainly, what I wanted to call your attention to is, in speaking to the developer, and he seemed like a pretty, actually decent guy, I told him the other night. But it has come to my attention that my neighborhood was acquired, and correct me if I'm wrong or misunderstood, later in the development than that first neighborhood. Correct? Corinth Forest? Yes. Yeah. Yeah. And I feel that, you know, my neighborhood hasn't been given a lot of notice. I was told by some folks on the council that, you know, I was notified a year ago. No, I wasn't because our neighborhood wasn't involved. So it's just come to our notice in the last couple of weeks. We have our HOA president who stepped up because a resident had to leave. He's got multiple family responsibilities. My good neighbors were off on mission trips and couldn't come. And to me, I'm not directly adjacent, but to me, it's been very difficult to get here and a lot of last-minute notice. And I understand that Paul very nicely met with a lot of folks, but I don't feel like my neighbors have had a lot of time to prepare. And so what I'm asking is, you know, could we have a win-win? Could they be given more time to study? And, you know, I know other folks were invited to meet with the developer. I got a notice one morning. I was already babysitting my grandkids in Dallas. So, you know, I really had no opportunity to attend that meeting. And I know, you know, people were traveling. So I'm just saying, you know, I feel like my neighbors should be given a little bit of time and I feel like it could be a win-win for them to have some time. I know he adjusted his plans to accommodate people to the south. We're to the west, is that right? And, you know, I just don't feel like they were given the same amount of time. So I'm hoping that you, you know, especially since next week, the meeting is Thanksgiving. People are traveling, they have family. And I know a lot of people that would like to come but just haven't been able to. So I'm just asking that, you know, they be given the full opportunity to study and negotiate so we can get a win-win. And so you all, who mainly volunteer and are away from your families, you know, can feel good about it, too. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Malaney, is it Carlo? Yeah, please state your name and your address to the records, please.
Melanie Carlo, and I'm at twenty-two eleven High Point Drive. So I'm directly, my fence is right behind the development. And so I just bought my house in June, so I'm new to Corinth. And I love my big backyard. It's so peaceful and quiet. I've been putting in some landscaping back there. And my master bedroom actually overlooks the backyard, facing the direction of the development. And every morning, the first thing I do is I open the windows and open up my blinds and it looks like I'm looking at a park. I love it. I was actually standing in my bedroom the other day and it occurred to me, as I was changing my clothes, that probably wouldn't be able to do that anymore because of the three-story condo that's going to be in my sightline. I am, if we have to look at the different plans, C is definitely better because at least there's not going to be a building directly behind my fence. And I do like option two with the trees because I have some trees already back there. If you put in the mason, it's going to kill one of my trees that are in the backyard right now, most likely based on what you said. So there's a lot of privacy issues for me in general. Also, when you put the trees in, they grow kind of slow. I don't know if y'all noticed that about trees. The plan C is definitely best, but the dumpster will be behind me, at least right now, is what they have planned. And then I'll be two doors down from the drive-through. And as we know, any good drive-through is going to repeat the order back really loud so you can hear it. So I'm a little concerned about the noise as well with that. My neighbors are not here tonight. They, their fourteen-year-old daughter spoke at the zoning committee, which was amazing. And she's fourteen and her sister is ten. And they have a pool in their backyard, they're right next to me. And they're very concerned about the privacy and safety for their daughters because they want to be able to go in their backyard and swim and play without somebody being able to see them back there. And she expressed her concern. And my neighbors told me they're actually looking at selling their house because if this happens, they won't have the privacy and safety that they thought they did when they bought their house years and years ago. So I know we need to develop something. I like that the developer has definitely made some changes and has accommodated some of our concerns. But still, the three-story, the drive-through, those are still things that are going to impact our community. So please consider that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Virginia Holt? Yeah, please state your name and your address for the records, please.
Virginia Holt, thirty-five hundred Buckingham Drive. I'm the closest to Veal Springs branch. I'm the most northernmost in the Kensington State subdivision. I strongly object to any changes from the current zoning of thirty-five-plus years, which was lower density, it's safer for water and single-family homes due to an unwise, high-density, mixed-use, commercial development. You know about the traffic issues, the water. I agree with everything that has been said. If you read about what's been happening all around the DFW Metroplex, you know what uncontrolled weather can do to existing surrounding communities hemmed in by tall, high-density developments. We see accelerated downstream flooding plus erosion, which has ramped up considerably since we moved in in two thousand and four, since we saw our first major landslide in two thousand and ten. And that's when the marker that he brought was forty feet up in the air, about ten feet from the edge of the cliff. And that whole ten-foot section by forty-foot section slopped off on Easter morning. My husband's like, oh my God! And the trees went in straight upright. Some of them are still alive, they're at crazy angles. Each rain, more and more is carved out, which was not a thing because that, the evidence is that marker sat there in that location for forty-five years. And like I said, we just found that marker last week. I was down in the creek. Every single rain, we see some erosion. And it's kind of cool in a way because it's like having access to a giant excavator, which is helping to reveal natural, or I'm guessing, hidden Native American structures in an area where Caddo Indians lived twelve thousand years ago, arriving towards the end of the Ice Age. In two thousand and fifteen, a landslide exposed a giant horizontal block of rocks with flat faces. I mean, they're like close to my size, which were set like a wall. They have tumbled out and fallen into the creek in the last, like, five years. Today, you can see, and I've got an illustration of a picture of it, you can see what looks like a mysterious line of- like a mysterious line of horizontal stones, each about this big, in a semicircular arch, and that's emerging from the clay. The, the rocks with you, if you pick one up, you can see it's a stone tool or a hammer. I used to live near a Lenai-Lenape Village in Pennsylvania when I was growing up, so I'm familiar. And that's a typical artifact. Tribes came and went in connection with recurrent climate cycles, like one we've seen today. This area had seen drought, coupled with the removal of protective surface vegetation, led to famine, and coupled with wildfires like we saw in the West. Okay, this happened repeatedly, 1100 AD, et cetera. I'm wondering if they saw something similar, a great black bird, like the migration of passenger pigeons before their extinction with the dust storms. So...
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, we have several people that have, it's Rebecca McMahon. She does not wish to speak, but she's opposed to this. We also have Michael McMahon. He does not wish to speak, and he's opposed to this. We have Leon Alexander, does not wish to speak, but he's opposed to this. Steve Mays does not wish to speak, and is opposed to this. Linda and George D. Haven, they do not wish to speak, but they're opposed to this. Pardon?
He wants to speak.
He doesn't want to speak.
Yeah, he checked Ron Bar.
Oh.
He meant to check.
Come on up. Yep, come on up. State your name and your address, and you can speak.
I'm, I'm George D. Haven at 2111 Venice, and I'm not here to talk about exotic animals. We, I live in a small community, about 84 homes, right across the street from this shopping center. If you look on a map and there's a green patch there, that's where we live, and that's our park. We spend about $30,000 a year maintaining that park, so we can have picnics, we can have family get-togethers, we have swings and slides and things for children. To me, and maybe I'm selfish, but I don't think this would enhance the view for, for us using the park. I bought the house six years ago. I, I bought it under the assumption that single-family dwellings is what I was buying into. And evidently, we are now changing those rules from single-family to a commercial area. I'm concerned about traffic. I'm concerned about my value of my house when I look into that. And I'm concerned about everybody else in my neighborhood having these, some of these same thoughts. I appreciate your time, and I hope you make a good decision.
Thank you. Last one I have is Lisa Clausen. She does not wish to speak, but she's opposed to this, so... But this time, I'll close the public hearing, and I entertain a motion on this item.
I had a couple of questions for staff, if that's okay. You guys hear me okay? And we, we talk about this a lot with a lot of different properties and developments, but the water leaving in this case, the Bosco property, and entering the flood zone. So we have very specific rules and regulations required as far as flooding and the hydrology reports and that kind of stuff. How does that affect the erosion and the flooding in that creek?
Well, Glenn is here. He might be able to speak a little more detail, but basically, a drainage plan has to be developed, and as I mentioned before, it has to comply with I-Swim. So it cannot, water cannot drain from the site at a rate higher than it is today, and it has to be, go into an area at a rate that's acceptable. So in this case, it will go into the creek and ultimately down to the, to the lake. Yeah, so essentially, it cannot, it cannot make the problem worse. And since there is no drainage plan today on the site, it can only make it better by funneling the water where it needs to go, at the rate it needs to go.
Okay. The fence, how is the fence going to be maintained on the current property on our side?
The developer has agreed to maintain that fence if the HOA in the neighborhood agrees to that. It is their fence, but there is a significant section of the fence, interestingly, where the smooth side faces the applicant property. So the only way to maintain it currently is actually to go on to the applicant's property to maintain it currently, which is a little unusual. So that if the, if the HOA or the neighborhood agrees to that, the applicant is willing to maintain the fence that has the finished side facing the property.
Okay, so if, if the applicant has to go on somebody's property because that specific individual wants help maintaining their side of the fence...
It'd be the other way around.
Other way around.
Currently, the residents that are to the south have to, I don't know how they get around, but they have to go on to the applicant's property to maintain the fence, because it's right on the property line. And for that reason, and I'm speaking of the finished side of the fence, there is a section of the fence where it is not that way, where the finished side is facing the resident's side. There's a long section of the fence, probably have a picture of it.
Maybe I'm not asking it correctly. If both sides of the fence need to be stained, one set of residents stain their side of the fence, he will stain the other. If the fence needs to be repaired, he repairs it.
I'm not sure about that, which has the smooth face facing side on the resident's side. I think that's a little more challenging, because he'd have to go into their backyard to do that. What the applicant has agreed to do, and he's here, he can speak to that, but this section that you're looking at here, that has the smooth side facing the applicant property, has agreed to maintain those, those boards and the staining and so forth. And any trees that would be planted will be planted at a distance where you could get back there. Does that make sense? And, and like, this picture on the right would make more sense for the resident, the individual residents that's in their backyards to continue to maintain...
Sure, staining. So if the fence blows down or something happens to it, then the developer fixes it.
Or this part.
Or that section. And how much of the existing homes along that property does that section...
I would guess that that's the majority of the fence. I would say two-thirds. It's the majority of the fence line.
Okay. Because it has trees. Okay, so that, so what we're talking about specifically is this section that is the majority, and that will be maintained by...
If, if the residents and the HOA agree, it's their fence.
Sure.
If they agree, the applicant is willing to maintain that, that part of the fence.
So, so we're clear, I think that issue's been brought up. What if the developer sells it? We're talking about approving zoning that includes conditions...
Zoning goes with the land.
Yes, so it won't matter if this developer flips it. Those promises will still be in place as part of the zoning. And that, you know, we changed the, the long-term use of this in the master plan several years ago, kind of as part of a study. And we didn't change the zoning, and there's some strategic reasons for that. And one of them is, when you're changing the zoning, you have more control over things like who's going to maintain the fence, who's, you know, where are you going to locate these buildings, all these kind of things. So it, it's not a mistake. It's something we did so that we could exercise a little more control over it, such as negotiating with the developer to move townhomes to a different part of the property. So from my point of view, you know, like, this property is not ever going to develop as single-family. And, and I'll, I'll kind of go through kind of some of the concerns and at least articulate my understanding of how they'll be addressed. But I feel like this has been an iterative process where the developer has, he came to us a year ago with the plan, and we just said, "No." And that was a more intense multifamily use. And then he came to our plant, P&amp;Z with the plan. There were concerns raised about sightlines, and he's responded each time with an improved product, which is what we want to get out of a developer. And I have some concern if we just keep saying "no," because this is, looks to me to be a good product. People will stop asking, because we do need commercial development. Many of our citizens over the years have expressed the desire to have unique restaurants close to where they live. That's what this developer thinks he can bring. And I hear y'all, you know, saying, "I don't know if this is going to work." And it's not that the government has no role in determining whether or not something's financially feasible, but it doesn't have a primary role. In other words, we let people take risks with their money and bear the burden of those risks. The city won't be investing any money in this property. We're just approving some uses, and it's up to the developer to make it work and risk their capital on whether or not... Yeah, and I, I think, based on what we can control with zoning, I think we're kind of at, kind of maxed that out. So let me, and y'all may disagree with my judgment about that, but, but I think we're, from my point of view, we're there. So the water runoff, and I know...
I just have to bring something up really, really, really quick. We, we actually cannot be talking back and forth. It's kind of one of those things. So we actually don't typically do this in, in trying to give some thought processes in those types of things. I'll let Sam go through. I've got a few things to kind of add, and then we'll kind of go down the row for some questions. I just want to get ahead of that.
Yeah, so, and I'll, some of this has already been addressed. Water and runoff, I just want y'all to know that that has been a problem in the city since I started, but we address that by adopting the strictest standards available for water runoff. And so at this phase in the development, the concept plan you're seeing is just that. I mean, the footprint has to remain the same, but the engineering has to be approved, and it has to meet our standards. And those standards require that the volume and velocity coming off this property cannot be increased. So more water can't come off, and it can't come off any faster. And so the conditions as far as erosion and all that, they may not be better, but they can't be worse. And it's not us up here at the podium guessing at whether that's going to happen. The, the developer, when they get ready to build, submits plans, and their engineer designs it, and then we have an engineer look at it and check their work to make sure that's not going to happen. I think we already talked about flipping the property. What we're doing here will be essentially promises that the developer's making to us that run with the land. If he flips it to somebody else, whoever buys it has to abide by those same rules and keep those same promises. I made a list as y'all were talking, sorry. The sightlines, I know it's not ideal. Mr. Garber and I sometimes joke that one of the things we'll never do is buy property next to open property, especially in a, a community like this where there's growth happening, because it will more likely than not change. But I appreciate that this developer, because we've had developers come in here and just say "no," and we've had to tell them "no" about how they were going to reorient the property and move things around. But I think moving those multifamily units across where they will never be looking directly into anybody's backyard is the most we can expect reasonably from a developer, and I appreciate that they did that. I've already talked about the concerns regarding the viability of the development. The concerns about the playgrounds and, and where children will play, I mean, we're looking to, and I think we're getting there, having a good mix of development. I doubt anybody with a kid is going to buy one of those townhomes. You know, it'll be somebody whose kids have moved out, somebody, a young family without kids. So that, that to me is not a concern. The buyer gets to decide whether or not they want to live there or not, and whether or not that's a product that they, that, that meets their needs. There was some discussion of taxes versus citizens, and I don't feel like in this instance, or really any that I've encountered, we're deciding against the citizens in favor of taxes. Those two things really aren't opposed to each other. One of our long-term goals has been to increase sales tax and shift the burden to the extent we can from our homeowners onto businesses and sales tax. And that was one of the reasons we identified this node is somewhere that could be a commercial development. And I was speaking with our city manager. He's, you know, upfront with developers all the time, and developers are telling him they're actually more excited about 2181 than a lot of sites along I-35, because it's better for commercial development, because people are actually more likely to stop. You don't have to have an exit. And so if that's the feedback he's getting from developers, the people that are risking their capital on these kind of investments, I think that's what we need to respond to and let them take the risk. I think those were the main things I had in my notes. And I just want y'all to know that we take this seriously. We want to address your concerns, but I also don't want to over-regulate property. You know, like, I am a property owner, too. And I want people to be reasonably free to do things with their property, and I think this kind of has been a good balance, what we're seeing with Option C specifically.
Sorry, I am so sorry. My microphone makes funny noises. I wanted to speak about two things really quickly. The first is, for those of you that got up and spoke, I know how totally nerve-wracking that can be, especially in front of a room full of people. And I want to let you know how much we appreciate that, number one. Number two, you are probably the kindest group of people that have ever been in this council meeting that has had a development go in next to them. And that includes my neighbors. And they weren't bad, but it is, it is shocking. You guys are through-the-roof awesome, and I want to let you know how much we appreciate that, no matter how this turns out tonight. Number two is, I'm currently walking through this with my neighborhood with a single-family development that is going right next. And it is the exact same situation, wide-open land, rolling hills, probably one of the better-looking open pieces of property in the city of Corinth. And of course, a developer purchased it and wanted to put in single-family homes. Ironically, all the neighbors that purchased homes across that fence were told that there was going to be a commercial property put in like this one. And so they were here, or at least three of them being very vocal, that why are we not getting a commercial property? Because if you put single-family homes behind us, then I've got a two-story home that's 20 foot off my fence that's looking in the backyard... that's 20 foot off my fence that's looking in the backyard at my daughter while she's swimming. Exact words. It's just reversed the type of, of development. And sitting in my home with a group of people, not quite this big, but close, and working through this process with a developer that's not near as responsive as this one, uh, was a challenge to say the least. But ultimately, what happens is, is when somebody wants to sell their property, the city's put into that facilitation role in some form or fashion. The third and final thing that I wanted to bring up from my perspective is if this property were to develop single-family, it's not going to be heft acre lots. You are probably going to end up with six to eight units per acre. There will be no green space. There will likely be very little tree mitigation because by the time you pack that thing in with density and the amount of, uh, underground utilities that are needed to put in there, one of the ways that we help them offset that is through the tree mitigation process. And so, sitting here, new to this process, and I know, I know how you feel because I'm currently watching it happen, uh, right across the little street from me with, to my neighbors. You kind of have this pie in the sky. We're, it's zoned SF2. We need single-family back here. And, and I'm telling you, in my 10 years of experience, in my opinion, this development is way better than what it's going to end up being if it was single-family. Way. The drainage is going to be better. The fence abutments is going to be better. It's going to be dense and your properties to the south of this are large. You're going to be sharing a fence with like three people each. Ultimately, it's what's going to happen. And if we tell developers no on the commercial part, we're going to start seeing these ultra-dense, single-family things coming in because that's what the neighbors said that they wanted. But you don't, you don't mean that you want that, but the market is yielding that because it's right between a six-lane highway and a bunch of trees and that property's expensive. The only way that owner's going to be able to develop that property is with that level of density. And ironically, had this exact same conversation with people when Valencia was put in. There were a group of people that were quite upset about Valencia being put in and the amount of traffic and all of this stuff. And now we have people living in Valencia that doesn't want the next, you know, piece developed. It happened with my neighborhood in province. And so it's just one of those things that we, it's one of my least favorite things, but it's one of the things that I think that I'm pretty good at helping communicate through. If this passes tonight, I will offer, uh, to you guys personally to be involved with any issues that may happen to pop up. I pay really close attention to how the developer is interfacing with, with our constituents and in, in this case, it looks like he's, is at least somebody that can be trusted. And so I'll leave it there.
I'm going to try to keep it really short. I just wanted to say, because anybody who emailed me got a small novel back on my opinion. So I'm pretty sure you're, you're clear on how I feel about things, but I, I wanted to touch on the traffic issue because that seems to be one of the biggest pain points. And it's something that we're already starting to discuss. It's, it's been brought to our attention that that's a concerning area for you guys. And so, you know, that's a problem already. It's not to do with this development. I just wanted to clarify that is that that's already a dangerous issue and should be looked at today. You know, and not, isn't directly tied to, to this development. Right? Okay.
Do you have anything?
I, I, I just have a question. That they, these fences right here where the smooth side is facing the homeowners, the current homeowners on High Point? If, if they flip, would they be willing to flip it around to where the Bosco property would then maintain the entirety of the fence? I don't know how, how, how the HOA, how you can say that they'll maintain this and not this. I would think, and maybe I just need clarification on that.
Yeah, I mean, that, I think that's going to require communication with the property owners because they may not want the not-smooth side facing them. There's a lot of people that want the smooth side facing them.
No, I get it. That's much prettier to look at, the smooth side.
And that's why I'm suggesting throughout this process and particularly on the, on the tree planting that, um, sorry, I lost my thought. On the tree planting that, uh, there'd be work with each one, a communication with each one of the property.
Each individual property owner.
Because I don't think everybody wants the same thing.
Right. No, I agree. And if I had a, a big mature tree in my backyard that was close to the fence line, I don't want anybody jacking with it. Or around it.
You're saying about the maintenance.
Right.
Maybe the property owners, some property owners may not want to have thi- this side facing their backyard.
Right. Did you want to add something?
Yeah, I, I speak to that and I was actually sitting over there kind of thinking of the solution and right now. Sorry, I'm sitting over there trying to think of a solution as we were looking at this because currently, these homeowners all take care of their own fences. And I don't know exactly how they get there, but they do maintain their fences and they were put there. I'd be willing to just to grant a five-foot easement, um, for, uh, maintenance easement on our side of the property. And they can continue doing their, um, whatever they do. And that way, if the HOA makes some recommendations, they do something within their HOA. They're already maintaining them. And they're going to be behind our landscape. So at the end of the day, we're actually going to provide a higher buffer to them. That way, if they want to change their fence or doing it at any point, the HOA says, hey, we would like to see something else done, the homeowner and the HOA, they can come to their agreeance. And we'll just give them access easement to where they can, they've got some space to work.
Okay.
Because right now, they don't have any space to work and I don't really know how they stay in this side of the fence.
Right, right. Well, I, I was, go ahead.
I just want a quick clarification before you ask your next question. So what you're suggesting is the, 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 the trees that are going to be blocking the view between these two properties, you'll put them five foot onto your property and then allow them.
Got about a 20-foot buffer there to work with.
Sure.
We're going to put that just from the property line to five feet. Yeah, we'll give access.
And you will maintain the easement access?
Will maintain the landscape side of it, yes.
Okay.
But this will give them some access. Because right now, I mean, you got some going, and they can use their preference too because they'll be behind our landscape buffer.
So if the HOA wants to replace the fence, if they want to put up a masonry wall, if they want to take it all down, they can do whatever they want.
Color from the inside, whatever it is they want to do, they just need some access and what's better than that would just give yeah, it's to give them access. So. Right. Yeah, and so if the homeowner needs some access, I have no problem, um, putting an easement in there that just grants them access. Yeah, magnitude.
Alright, thanks. So, yeah, I won't, I mean, I kind of agree with kind of the points that Sam and Scott and, and Lindsey made. I tried to answer every email and, and address some of the concerns. And I, I agree with Sam that once this PD, if approved, it will stay with the property. So nobody can change. You know, if a new developer comes in, they can't change. They have to build what's in this PD and, and make, follow the promises that are made. So I appreciate too, everybody coming up and, and speaking and, and, um, it's, it's, it's the only way that, that we know and we can communicate with y'all too. But we, we do take it seriously, like Sam said, and, and, um, we're both, we're all citizens in the city. So, um, but we want, I personally want y'all to know that, that I read every email and, um, I appreciate you reaching out and, and more so standing up today and, and voicing your concerns. So, and it was pretty nice. Y'all were nice. So I appreciate that.
And, and I do want to, um, make sure that everyone realizes because the masonry fence came up several times. But there's not going to be a masonry fence. That was just a thought at the beginning. So just so everyone knows, there's not going to be a masonry fence. And I can't really add anything. You guys said it really well. Uh, but I do want to echo also, thank you guys for being considerate and respectful. Because I had this in my neighborhood, what, five or six years ago, and they weren't very nice and respectful. So, thank y'all.
Melissa, is options to the in our, that you presented, is that the one where the developer works with the homeowners individually?
Yes, correct.
Okay, is there any other comments, questions? Okay, I'd entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I would move to approve case number ZapD 25-009 Bosco Plan Development as presented with three conditions: incorporation of Option C Site Plan and Design Standards and incorporation of Option 2 for the tree planting of the southern boundary and, uh, with the creation or placement of a five-foot maintenance easement along the southern boundary to allow for the homeowners and/or the HOA to maintain the fencing that is on the homeowner's property.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. It passes. Congratulations. Okay, business agenda. Consider an act upon the alternative compliance, uh, non-residential building articulation requests by the applicant Bates Martin Architects to, to waive the requirements for building articulations of 18 inches at every 30 feet in lieu of other building articulation elements for development of 11,423-foot square, square-foot industrial building on approximately 9.07 acres located at 7701 South Stemmons Freeway. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Melissa Daly will cover this item. Answer any questions.
Thank you. This is, um, concerning the development of Coserv's, uh, head, uh, Fleet Services Building. This is a building that will, um, provide services just for their, uh, Coserv fleet, not for the public in general. This is the location of the site at Quail Run and Corinth Parkway. Uh, it's currently zoned industrial. Uh, they're planning about 11,000 square foot, um, Fleet Services Building. Uh, this is what it's going to look like. Um, our current code requires a depth articulation of at least 18 inches every 30 feet, meaning you have to have a, a depth, uh, in the architecture of the, of the facade every 18, uh, every 30 feet. Because this is a, it's a 162-foot-long prefabricated metal services, uh, building. It requires, um, unobstructed bays for vehicle operations. So it doesn't really suit, um, the use, um, that is proposed for this building. So we worked with the applicant, Coserv, to work on some other, uh, options to provide some articulation and interest, particularly that facade which is fronting, uh, Quail Run Drive. So they worked on a couple of options. This is, uh, where they landed. Uh, we, they are going to provide canopies. That's the, uh, these awnings in the blue over the garage doors, uh, eve overhangs, peaked roofs, um, and additional glaze, I'm sorry, the blue is the windows. The, the, the canopies are shown in gray here and the windows are above it. And then, uh, additional, uh, glazing. So, uh, we felt that this provided the most articulation that was possible, given the, the use of the building. So SAF recommends approval of the alternative compliance request as presented and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is there any questions from council? Okay, I'd entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I'll move to approve case number AC 25-0002, Coserv HQ Fleet Services Non-Residential Building Articulation. Well, now, now I can't read it. I'll have to go back to my. I was reading it off the screen, Lana. Uh, let's see here. Articulation Alternative Compliance Request for the waiver, waiver of non-residential building articulation requirements of 18 inches every 30 feet in lieu of canopies, eaves, overhangs, peaked roofs, and glazing showed in the building elevations.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote.
Lindsey. Lindsey.
It's unanimous. Item number 12. Consider an act on appointment, resignation, and removal of board and commission members for the Finance Audit Committee. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is really just some cleanup, uh, a few things we need to do to finish our board and commission appointments. The Finance Audit Committee, uh, actually had a vacancy, uh, and we had one applicant when we went through that process a couple of months ago, but we could never get the interview scheduled with them. So you were not able to interview anyone for that vacancy since, and we also, at that time, should have recommended the reappointment of Jared Usler. His term was up and we just missed that. And, uh, those of you on the committee know Jared. But since that time for that vacancy, I have had someone reach out to me interested in the, um, to fill that position and that information is in your packet. And so we just need to take whatever action on that you're ready to take.
I'd, I'd entertain a motion on that.
I move to appoint Nick Kokrom to place four and reappoint Jared Ooster to place five on the Finance Audit Committee.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Council comment and future agenda items. The purpose of this section is to allow each council member the opportunity to provide general updates and/or comments to fellow council members, the public, and/or staff on any issue or future events. Also, in accordance with Section 30.085 of the Code of Ordinances, at this time, any council member may direct then an item be added as a business item to any future agenda. Mr. Burton.
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Garber.
I just wanted to take a quick second to thank staff, especially those that I've been working closely with on, uh, that development. That a little bit more time and energy and I'm sure if it was that way with me, it was that way with others. And, and I know you guys are already busy, so thank you.
Israel.
Okay, uh, I wanted to, um, get the wild and exotic animal ordinance thing on a future workshop so we could discuss how we could figure out that situation. Because I, I cried a little. That was sad. And then I also wanted to talk about, um, those handbills that have been going out to residents, uh, for a long time and how we can maybe mitigate those being handed out, people that don't want them in a workshop session. And then also, I would love to revisit some way that we could get creative and maybe expand the notification radius beyond 200 feet, but still differentiate that so we can do what the state wants us to, uh, at a future workshop session as well. Because I think that issue came up again tonight. That's all.
Ms. Henderson.
Nothing, sir.
Ms. Pickman.
I just want to thank staff for the recycling event, um, over the weekend. It, that's always a great event. And I keep stuff piled in my dining room for that. My husband is real glad when that day comes around. So, and Motors on Main, that was a great event. Like, I, I, I think Bill, the mayor, went over there. It was, it was heavily attended and it was, I'm not really into those cars that don't have air conditioning, but it was really, really cool. It was on AM radios, but it was, it was really cool. So thanks to the staff for, for doing that. So.
Yeah, I saw my old car. There was 1955 Chevy, or Mustang. Two-door, hardtop. Yeah, it was one that I, I bought right back after I got out of Vietnam. When I got back from Vietnam, that's what I bought. So. Again, I, I just have one announcement. I'm, I just, uh, I know everybody here is, uh, maybe going into the holiday season. So I wanted to thank, uh, all the staff for all they've done. And again, I hope you have a happy Thanksgiving and I'm sorry I didn't get to join you on your Thanksgiving dinner here, but I was, uh, dealing with a gas leak in my house. So I, I was over there attending to that. Lastly, uh, I will not be seeking reelection in, uh, in, uh, May of 2026. I'm 82 years old and I'm, think I'm about time to take a little time off and retire. So. But it's been, it's been a good run. I've enjoyed it and I, I know that, uh, good candidates will, will replace me. So with that, we're going to executive session and we'll deal with personnel matters.